Commissioner Vidrickson testing the audio.
Loud and clear in the Zoom meeting, Bob.
Thank you.
We must be having some difficulties here on the TV.
Good morning. I will call the, it's nine AM and I will call to order the April sixth meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the role?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Would you please stand for the flag salute and then stay for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, we'll have a citizen's input. Before that, I guess since we're still on Zoom, I need to ask if everyone can make sure that all the microphones, phones and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly. I would appreciate it. Now, Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Brad.
Assuming that users in the Zoom meeting are using the Zoom client, if you select the Participants tab at the lower part of your screen, you will see a raise hand function come up on the lower right-hand side of your screen. If you raise, if you select the raise your hand function, that lets the host know that you would like to speak.
Okay, thank you, Brad. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission? Are there any on Zoom? Seeing or hearing none, we'll move into regular business. Consent agenda, approved consent agenda is presented. At this time, I will, we will move into, question, are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda pertaining to approval of tax rule adjustment, approval of public forum agenda will stand as approved. Moving on to the next item, presentations. Item one.
Present award certificate for IT security response with Brad Bowers, Information Technology Director.
Well, Brad. Morning, Mr. Brad, IT Department.
Good morning, commissioners. It's indeed an honor.
Could you get closer?
It is indeed my honor to give this award to Philip Urban, and I'd like to read a little bit of how we got here.
Okay, please.
In the early morning hours of Thursday, March fourth, 2021, I got a phone call from Philip. It was 3:55 AM. Philip explained that he was seeing a high-level alert from our endpoint detection and response software, indicating that we had a threat on our network. His phone call prompted our emergency response to these types of events. His, his phone call resulted in getting a critical patch installed to prevent this problem. Our EDR software was alerting us to the fact that they had detected files planted on our email server that were part of a recently discovered Microsoft Exchange email hack. Philip took the initiative to configure a rule in his mailbox that basically said, when I get a, when I get a email from our endpoint detection and response software and I get an alert as a subject line, I'm going to forward this email to my smartphone in the form of a text message. If we all just alerted on our emails, we'd never get any sleep, but it is pretty rare that you'd get a text message in the middle of the night. So Philip took the initiative to do that, and in this case, it worked very, very well. And all of us in the department have now made this part of our, our emergency response to our endpoint detection software. At, at that point, when Philip first had the detection, he had a choice to make. He could sound the alarm, or he could say to himself, this is in the middle of the night, it must be a false positive. He didn't do that. He sounded the alarm and called, and that started our emergency response. We were able to, we were able to have the, the necessary patches installed by about 4:45, we got started, and by about 5:30, the process was done. So Seline County, me personally would like to award Philip a certificate of appreciation for his actions on March the fourth. Without a doubt, without a doubt in my mind, it prevented a very, it, it prevented a cybersecurity event that we didn't want to have, for sure. He took the initiative by sounding the alarm about the detection. That demonstrates Philip's commitment to cybersecurity in general on our network. And I'd like to present this certificate of appreciation to Phil for his actions on March the fourth.
Thank you, Phil.
Kevin. Lauren. So, good morning, commissioners. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator. I wanted Brad to highlight the work of Phil Urban because he really started the response, but that response was really a team effort. It was Brad who took the call and came in, drove over here at 4:45 in the morning and got started, and it has been our entire IT staff who have been working on the response, not only to this incident, but to another incident that I mentioned to you in, in my county administrator report a week ago. So we actually have certificates for the entire IT staff. So. I think they all deserve a round of applause.
Thank, thank you, IT Department, because it's, it is a major, major job to keep this many devices that you guys take care of and support to keep it safe for everyone to use, and the county especially. But thank you for your job. Okay, next item, action item.
Item number one, review of Amendment One to Resolution 20-2297, review of Section Six, mask mandate with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, commissioners, members of public.
As soon as the presentation is brought up, I'll be able to get started. All right. So this would be the, I guess, interim COVID-19 update since we met last week. Next slide, please. So normally, I would start with a national and state picture, but since it's only been a week and we're focused, especially right now, on what's happening locally, I thought I would really start there. In the past week, we've had 24 additional cases, no additional deaths, and we are sitting at 37 active cases as of yesterday. Hospital does have two COVID inpatient as of yesterday. The two-week percent positive rate is down to less than 2%. Do you want to kind of put that in context, that that percent positive rate is determined based off the number of tests and those number of positive tests? And overall, testing has dropped, dropped significantly, which has also been a factor in that lower percent positive rate. And the two-week incidence rate is 55 per 100,000. An additional note, although we haven't seen any variants here in Seline County, the state currently is reporting 76 cases due to variants in 14 counties, and then there was the press release on Friday of the first case of the South African variant here in the state. Next slide. So just kind of looking at that percent positive rate, those two-week incidence rates, and then the hospital capacity, excuse me, over time. So we can see over time, and this is from reporting date, February eighth, so last couple of months. I couldn't go back much further because then it definitely would have not been readable on the slide, trying to put that much in there. However, you can see that we have had a steady decrease in the percent positive rate. The two-week incidence rate as well has showed a steady decrease as the one that we reported yesterday was just a slight increase, and the hospital is still, for the last several weeks, reported a capacity greater than 30% to be able to handle patients. Next slide. So looking at cases per month, so far this month, we have had 17 new cases in the month of April. Next slide. At this point, we've had no new deaths in the month of April. Next slide. Just taking a look, this is a snapshot from our GIS dashboard that's on the website. And you can see that continued downward trend of active cases over time, as well as the daily case rates that we have experienced. And the last three reporting periods, which would be those last three yellow dots, represent 23 active cases, and then 33, and then currently 37 active cases. Next slide. The same, looking at hospitalizations over time, we are starting to see small periods where a day or two, the hospital has zero COVID patients, which was reported on Friday, but then over the weekend into Monday, they had two that were admitted for COVID, but they are still able to handle what they have for quite a little bit still. They've got pretty good capacity still. Next slide. So rather than just the single, pretty much straightforward recommendation, if you will, that I have put forth in the past, I have brought you some options this morning for consideration. Course of action one, and these are just options. Again, there's, there's these three, but again, it's, it's your resolution. But option one would be to continue the mask resolution until we get, reach a target of 70% of adults vaccinated, multiple days without cases, and the vaccine demand is satisfied, or to that one, which is what we have talked about in the past. Course of action two would be continue the mask resolution, but set an expiration date in one to two weeks. This would allow organizations that wish to continue any type of internal masking policy, or whatever they, you know, want to do to be able to implement that, and then issue a strong recommendation for continued mask wearing. And course of action three would be to drop the mask resolution now, but still issue a strong recommendation for continued mask wearing. One note I want to make on the 70%, truly, if, if we were trying to reach herd immunity, herd immunity with vaccinations, we would really be looking at 70% of the entire population. The 70% of adults vaccinated is certainly a lower standard than that 70% of the entire population, but given that we can't vaccinate under 16, because that's not available, this at least was a target that we could potentially try to reach. Last slide. And so regardless of your decision, I would continue to strongly recommend that people wear masks and follow all of the public health recommendations, such as social distancing, hand washing, staying home when sick, and definitely get vaccinated. And with that, are there questions from the commission? Yes, I've, I've many phone calls, emails, but what keeps coming up is that if we do take away the mask order, and like your COA too, one to two weeks, and, and give companies, businesses, schools to make policies, what if, what if this does go away? What, are they able to go ahead and have a mandate for their business, or the whole school district, or whatever, and without any, any ramification back from the state or people, any lawsuits or anything like that?
Maybe I'll try and handle that one, Commissioner, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator. So businesses are private property. A business can require you to wear green to come on their property. I mean, that's, you know, it's free enterprise. So as for schools, the latest state legislation appears to give school boards the authority to enforce health protocols in schools. However, I did see an article this morning that a number of those are being challenged, particularly in the metro areas. So I think it's sort of an open question, what the courts will find around schools' ability to enforce those particular types of policies. I think the, the same issue equally applies, for example, to the building authority. You know, you know, what, what would we choose to do with this building, other county facilities, et cetera? So anytime you have a public actor, like a school district, they're held to a higher standard than, than a private business would be.
Okay, that's kind of pretty much what I had. So anybody else? Any other commissioners have any questions? Or comments?
This is Commissioner Vidrickson. I, I just want to say that I've had contact or been contacted by a lot of people, but the ones that stick out in my mind are the, the physicians in the medical field that have contacted me, and, and I would say there's, I'm not even going to guess how many, it's many, 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 and 100% of them were in favor of continuing the mask mandate.
Okay. And?
Jason, I don't want to muddy the waters, but just for an education here, people who have contacted COVID, and we don't know their immunity level, or whether they can catch it again, or how long their immunity level is. Is that correct?
Currently, the CDC and KDHE both, although they haven't fully determined how long immunity lasts. They have, however, for, for the purpose of establishing how long someone doesn't have to, say, for instance, quarantine if they're exposed again after having COVID at six months.
So if they do have some sort of immunity, I'm assuming, and maybe wrong, but if they do have that, could those numbers be factored into your herd immunity of 70%?
They could, yes. And so that would, I think, potentially put us at, oh, now, again, not being able to account for, there's probably some overlap in people that have had COVID in the past since this started, and who have also been vaccinated. But that could put us in the neighborhood currently, I think, of about 20,000 or so as a ballpark. I don't have that specific numbers in front of me, but that's my best guess right at the moment.
And, and we're, we would like to hit 70% of our adult population?
Yes, sir.
And what would that number be?
That number would be around 28,000 or so vaccinated in order to reach 70% of the adult population vaccinated.
Well, it's, it's very telling through the slides that, that the masks and the social distancing now with the tool of the immunizations have really dropped the numbers, and, and it, it's very evident that it, that it has worked, and, and that is probably the most significant would be the immune, the immune, oh, man, the immunization shots that people are receiving.
Yep.
Commissioner Shadwick here. I don't know how well you can hear me. My bandwidth seems to be low. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Now, option number one seems unrealistic to me. I don't ever think of the, so many people that I've talked to are not even going to get the shot. I'm not so sure that that's a level that we ought to be shooting for. I would be in favor of either two or three at this point, depending on the conversation and, and some of the comments coming up. But I have noticed that increasingly, social disobedience is happening on the mask mandate that maybe makes it almost a moot point right now, anyway. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any comments from the public at this time?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a hand raised in the Zoom meeting.
Okay, let's go ahead and take that and get that, that Zoom taken care of.
Hi, yes, I want to say I strongly support the, all of what the physicians are saying in continuing with option one. I think, again, I keep going back to common sense and science, and the fact that, that our numbers have dropped have something to do with the fact that it's been mandated. So please, please, and I know it's hard for people who own businesses and such, but right now, we have to hang in and stay firm, particularly with the new variants that are coming around. I'm afraid we're going to have an upsurge if, if we don't continue. One, one concern that we shared that I agree with from someone yesterday at the city meeting that was opposed to the mask mandate, she did share a concern about kids being allowed to play sports and being so close to one another and not wearing masks. That, that's never made sense to me either. But other than that, I do strongly encourage you to stay with option one. Uh, but other than that, I do strongly encourage you to stay with option one. Thank you.
Okay. Any other Zoom?
Mister Chairman, we do have a couple of hand raised. Uh, Aaron would like to speak.
Go ahead. Is anyone there?
Yeah, sorry, I don't usually use Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to implore you to do option two or three, I don't care. But at least two, I just really want to date on this. Even if it's a month out, we'd really all just like to see the light at the end of the tunnel. And that's all.
Thank you. Okay, any other Zoom right quick?
Chad Ferber has his hand raised.
Hey, Chad.
Good morning, Commissioners. I know I've spoken to you a couple of times about this and um I want to go on record again saying that that this mask mandate has served its course. Uh, Mister Tiller gave all of the numbers and I appreciate him doing that. In fact, the the Health Department puts these numbers out on social media for us uh, regularly. I believe it's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday evenings. And uh, I was doing a little bit of math on those and and they're monitoring thirty seven cases here in the county. And if you, if you do the math on that, you're looking at six one hundredths of one percent of our population is being monitored for this virus, which means we have completely flattened the curve. Uh, our hospitals are not overwhelmed by any stretch of the imagination. Um, and that was, that was kind of what we were wanting from this body when you imposed the max mask mandate was to put some type of of closing date or ending date on this. And unfortunately, it was not done, and because of that, it has dragged on and on and on and on now for for month after month. Um, so I I think it's time to relinquish this mask mandate. Go ahead and move on. Uh, the citizens of Salina are smart enough to continue social distancing. There will be many that continue to wear a mask and and there's no problem with that. Uh, there will be many that choose that their business will require a mask when you go in there, and that is their prerogative. Um, as was stated earlier, uh, per Senate Bill forty, um, school districts have their own choice as to whether or not they require masking and distancing, that type of thing. Businesses, private entities do as well. Um, I think we can look around the country and see examples. We can even look around our state. Uh, down in Sedgwick County, they relinquished their mask mandate uh, about a week and a half ago, I believe it was. On the day they stopped their mask mandate, they had eighty two new cases. And if you look at their data from uh, yesterday, they had eleven new cases without a mask mandate in place. It has still dropped significantly. Texas is the same boat. They dropped their mask mandate, and even with the surge of illegals coming across the border that are Corona positive or COVID positive, their numbers are still dropping every day. And I think that goes to the point that citizens know how to protect themselves. We know to wash our hands. We know to social distance. We know to stay home when we're sick. All we're asking is to give us the freedom to walk around and make our own health choices. Um, I I do like the idea of being in favor of having an end date. And if it's a week out, that's fine. It helps businesses to make a plan for themselves, but there just needs to be an end of this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And we'll move into the public forum here in the office here. Go ahead.
Ken Ritz from Salina, Kansas. These numbers of cases uh there's no way we can know how many people are homesick and haven't appeared on the list yet or may never appear on the list. Uh, I'm not counted. I had COVID in early January and I I'm not in the in the number. Uh, what I've noticed is that that uh, it's gone from last summer. I I didn't know anybody who had uh, COVID nineteen, and now I know of entire families. Uh, so I think that I think our our, we're undercounting tremendously. Uh, but interestingly, uh, there are parts of the world that that uh are free of COVID nineteen, entire countries, uh, and they did it without uh vaccine at all. Uh, and I think it would behoove us to maybe look at those who've been successful and see what they did. Uh, and these aren't uh, little islands in the middle of the Pacific. Uh, New Zealand that people think of quite mistakenly, and I did too. Of just being a few country folk with sheep and what have you. There are over five million people in New Zealand, an area larger than the state of Kansas. And they've been free of, uh, they've had twenty five deaths total since the beginning. And they haven't had a new case in months. Uh, they've been almost a year with just a handful of cases. And I would suggest that that uh, uh, they live much as we do. Uh, there are farmers, there are bankers. Uh, there, there are members of civic organizations. I'm sure the Lions Club is quite substantial there, it's international. Uh, it would behoove us, I think, to to uh go online or get on the phone and and call people like us in these countries and and get some idea. Uh, because there are parts of the world that things are getting very much worse, including in the US.
Thank you. Your three minutes is are up.
With the virus being in the
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry. Yeah, we need to go. We got quite a few people. Thanks. Yep, thank you. Yep, yep.
Uh, Dennis Benoit, I live in uh, Geneseal, but uh, I was born here, so I consider this my hometown.
Uh, I have a question for Jason. Uh, could you please repeat?
Repeat what you just said about immunity on the Pfizer and Moderna shot. You are familiar with they, they are gene therapy and they don't deal with immunity.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If he could make his remarks to us.
Yeah, I was just going to say, when we have this public speaking, it is to do with to the Commissioners and Yeah, but okay, well, uh, I'll tell you that
Just ask us and
This is uh
Decide that we need to have him, but could you move that microphone over where you, there you go.
Uh, this is gene therapy. This is gene therapy vaccines. The old vaccines that you grew up with, where you stick yourself and you get an immunity is what he was talking about. I need it verified that the Moderna and the Pfizer do not cons- are not involved with the immunity. That old definition is tossed out. This is the new stuff. This is a a gene therapy. And so what I just want him to confirm what I thought I heard him say. Because this new stuff is revolutionary. And uh, it's experimental and uh, the people are not informed about what they're getting. The people in our community are are you being used as guinea pigs? If they don't let you know, give you the information for informed consent. Now, that's what my concern is.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Mary, mine from Salina, Kansas, and I strongly urge you guys to go with option number three. I think like Chad said, we are all responsible adults, know how to handle our lives. And if those people choose to continue to wear their masks, let them wear their masks. Let us that don't want to wear a mask go without a mask, same way with businesses. If they want people to come in with masks, they let them allow that. But let us have a choice of what we want to do with our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Dalton, City of Salina. Um, it's up to the, City of Salina flat out said that they're waiting on the county to act on something. Why don't you guys just act and see what happens? Last time when you guys did not do the mask law, then Commissioner Hodges from this, then at the time, Commissioner Hodges pushed the mask law, and then you guys brought yours on. Jason has counterdicted himself so much, it's comical. Do something because obviously half the people in this room don't want to wear masks. You guys are probably getting emails all the time. And Jason knows dang good and well, he's not going to get twenty eight or twenty nine thousand uh, people in the city of, in Saline County to get vaccinated. When's this going to end? When all of you guys are off commission and there's a new commission and they s- and they tell, and they put Jason in his place? Why don't you get some medical experts that have fought the the virus from Salina regional and not Jason? Because obviously, he has a different priorities.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm Dr. Kraft with Salina Family Healthcare Center, a part of the collaborative to try to vaccinate Saline County. Um, I'm a Saline County resident. Uh, thank you for your time this morning. Um I I come to you as the county commission um, in a spirit of thanks. The actions that this body took to support a mask mandate have saved hundreds of lives of Saline County residents. Hundreds of people today have the liberty to live their lives because of this body and the decisions that were made. We're currently in a situation where businesses are able to open up more freely and citizens feel safer out in public. You struck the right balance between individual liberty and the common good, which is your duty as a county commission body. The current best evidence suggests that at least seventy percent of the population needs to be vaccinated to reduce the COVID transmission rate to the point where we can end this and uh, pandemic while we as a society go without masks, which is what we all want. To go about our days without masks. Saline County has not reached this minimum level of vaccination. Taking steps now that will decrease mask wearing in public before we reach this level of vaccination level uh, leaves us vulnerable to another wave of COVID, particularly when there are more transmissible variants on their way to Kansas. I urge an extension of the mask mandate as our best chance to bridge us to the day where we have sufficiently vaccinated society and can safely leave the masks behind. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Carol Woody, Salina, Kansas. I I understand what everyone's saying. Um, I agree with Chad. I'm only making a statement that I don't think we're ever going to get to the seventy percent. I don't think it's feasible. I'm asking, let people choose. They're adults. We all know to wash our hands. We all know to stay how many feet apart. It's we've got a positive rate now. Please, just let the adults make the choice. Let the kids outside to play. The sun, the fresh air is going to help them more than anything without masks. We've just got to come to an end sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Karen Shades, Salina, Kansas.
Good morning.
Um, in the course of my life, I've worked for three lieutenant colonels. And what differentiates a lieutenant colonel from a full colonel is the ability, a full colonel will lead people into battle. And I worked with one lieutenant colonel who was very good at seeing the way the wind blows and kind of following what might, what what the public would accept. And I agree with Commissioner Shadwick that the public's ready to be done with masks. But I think your role as leadership is to marshal the public through we aren't through this COVID matter. And I can live with either way you go. But I think leadership requires something more from all of you, and I've heard a lot of people say individuals can make the same, make their choices. I have a degree kind of in the medical field, layer, years of experience in the medical field with working with the decades with the state. It's not that clear to me. And you know, I I I think you've heard the local expert, you've heard, we've heard our own. I think we have to go with what they say.
Okay.
I just want to ask Mister Tiller an- another thing. Did we, have we had? It looks to me like we really haven't had any major increases in the COVID cases since the like I was saying last week, the, since we had the Equafest, since we had the uh, four H. Or not the four H, but the Farm Show. And every, every week I I go to the Liberty Football Games. And and I look at it and uh, I sit around and look in the stadium to see how many people have masks on. Almost zilch. But some people, they have to have one to get in there, but then they take them off and they run around all day long and and nobody has that one. And that's the same way, we're we're sitting here as as a community. And we look at it and and I, I look at it as that we draw in so many people from so many counties. Whether it's events on sports events and we, and somebody talked about how, you know, to think that schools have allowed wrestling all year long, basketball, and these kids are all over each other. And so I just look at it, there's, there's, there's got to be something to those counties that did not have mask mandates that did not have, and their, their cases have been just as low or lower than people that had them. And if we have not had any big increases in those, since we've had these big gatherings, I I just, I'm, I'm ready to sit and say, let's, let's look at it seriously and and deal away with it, but I just wanted to say that, but go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, just in response to that, no, we don't have evidence that there has been uh, outbreaks related specifically either to those two events, Equafest and um, the Farm Show that you mentioned. Um, that being said, uh as I mentioned earlier, testing here has been significantly, or significantly down. You know, whether uh, any of those were tested somewhere else. Um, so remember that the evidence is only as good as the data and follow-up. So to your point, no, there hasn't been evidence of a significant spread or outbreak from either of those events. But there's also not any data to support the opposite, that there wasn't any kind of spread at those either.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I look at is, do we have a consensus on to move in one direction or the other?
Mister Chair, I'd make a motion.
I'd accept a motion.
Um, I move we re- we rescind Saline County's mask order effective immediately.
So you're asking for the COA three immediate removal?
Correct.
And do we get a second on that?
This is Commissioner Shadwick. Was the motion to immediately take it down?
Yes.
I'm in favor of doing it in a week or two, um, so I will not second that motion. I just wanted to make sure that I heard it correctly.
Okay.
Sounded like it died for a lack of second.
Uh, we died like second.
Phil, can you help us out here a little bit? In in time, timeframe, week from now, I mean, we've got to clean this up or do another resolution, I'm assuming.
This is Commissioner Shadwick again, and and to follow up on that, I move that we um remove the mask mandate and put in um, a one-week timeframe.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, so, okay, so if I'm understanding the current motion on the table correctly, um you would basically uh be amending uh resolution, th- this would essentially be amendment number two to resolution twenty dash twenty-two ninety-seven, um, which would uh essentially add a paragraph with the end date of um April twelfth or thirteenth, whatever. That it, I'm, I'm thinking that's the, the action that you're taking.
That, that'll work. Thank you for the clarification, Phil.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second to use COA two. And I will say in one week, allow for the businesses to get everything built. So it's like in one week, uh, we will have the masks and that's the motion. Are there any?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Clarification.
Okay.
I thought was option number three.
No, three was, was the get rid of it right now. Two was one or two weeks. And that's what Monty Chadwick did, and you second.
I, I, I stand corrected. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Chadwick, and that is a proper recap of my uh motion. It's basically option two, putting a one-week timeframe.
Yes. Are there any further comments from the commissioners? If not, we'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Nay.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Nay.
Commissioner Chadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Okay, thank you. Move on to next item.
Item number two, Week of the Young Child proclamation with Leila Peppers, Program Director at Angel Academy.
And Leila had to leave, so we got somebody else?
I'm Leila.
Oh, are, okay, I'm sorry.
Angela had to leave.
Okay, all right, excuse me.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Leila Peppers. And I'm here this morning as, actually um on behalf of the Salina chapter of the Kansas Association for the Education of Young Children. And I have a proclamation that has been presented, but I'd like to read it if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay. Whereas the Salina chapter of KSA EYC, in conjunction with the Kansas Educ- Association for the Education of Young Children, KSA EYC, and National Association for the Education of Young Children, NAEYC, are celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of the Week of the Young Child so that we can continue to recognize and advance the early childhood education profession. And whereas the first years of a child's life are the period of the most rapid brain development and lay the foundation for all future learning. And whereas participation in high-quality early childhood education saves taxpayer dollars, makes working families more economically secure, and prepares children to succeed in school, earn higher wages, and live healthier lives. And whereas the essential yet chronically undervalued childcare sector has sacrificed and struggled to serve children and families since the start of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children, birth through age eight, who make a difference in the lives of young children in Saline County deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policy that supports early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's future and to the prosperity of our society. And now therefore, the Saline County Board of Commissioners does hereby, should I read this part? Okay, proclaim April tenth to the sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one as the Week of the Young Child in Saline County, Kansas, and recognizes that when our society invests in early childhood providers, we also invest in children and their families.
Thank you. It's a, it's amazing. That's what you gotta do. But is there, and it, during this COVID initial, is the, has it really dropped your attendance of these, and provided for these children?
Absolutely. It has, it dropped the attendance as um parents have lost jobs or even work from home. They're not enrolling their kids in um care. And so those facilities are feeling that hurt of the decrease in income. Um, and so continuing to pay high-quality staff is um, becomes even harder when there isn't the enrollment or the participation. So it has been really challenging. Um, but we do, thank you for the support that we've had from the community and.
And thank you for all you do, and it is an important factor. Do you guys have anything planned or for this week or anything during the month?
Um, we do have some activities planned during the week. Um, on Friday, actually, the Salina chapter is um participating in a yoga for families that's going to be on our Facebook Live. So if you're interested, check that out. Um, we also put together for families some kits that are, that had just free-form art um items inside of them. We painstakingly put together eight hundred bags for Saline County kiddos. And um just to encourage creativity and family bonding also during this time where um sometimes mental health has been kind of low and so if something can make you smile, we wanted to participate in that.
Okay, well, I have a certificate here for you on there.
And Mr. Chair, I would move we proclaim April tenth to the sixteenth, twenty-one as, as the Week of the Young Child in Saline County, Kansas.
I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we uh approve a Week of the Young Child proclamation. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Chadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Line there. Next item.
Item number three, National County Government Month with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
What do you have, Hannah?
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this is a proclamation for National County Government Month for the month of April of twenty-twenty-one. Whereas the nation's three thousand sixty-nine counties, parishes, and boroughs serving more than three hundred million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant, vibrant communities. And whereas counties provide public health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more. And whereas Saline County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, under the leadership of the National Association of Counties President Gary Moore, NACO is demonstrating how counties matter, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the coronavirus pandemic. And whereas each year since nineteen ninety-one, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Saline County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim of April twenty-twenty-one as National County Government Month, and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by the Commissioners? Any comments by the public? I'll bring back, bring it back to the Commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we declare April twenty-twenty-one as National County Government Month.
I second the motion.
Okay. We, it's been, uh, are there any further comments? It's, if not, I will call for the vote. It has been moved and seconded that we, excuse me, has been moved and seconded that we approve National County Government Month. I'll call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Hannah. Next item.
Item number four, RFA one-four-seven dash two-one, Right-of-Way Offer for Simpson Road Improvement Project with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Turn that on. Okay, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, Saline County Road and Bridge has programmed a roadway improvement project on Simpson Road between Magnolia Road and Crawford Street. The project includes the addition of a four-foot-wide roadway shoulder and the construction of flatter ditch slopes. This work will require the acquisition of additional road right-of-way along the entire two-mile-long project. We are using federal funds for the construction of the project, so we must follow a very strict procedure for obtaining the additional right-of-way. On March ninth, twenty-twenty-one, the Board of County Commissioners approved the offers for all of the needed right-of-way acquisitions, with the exception of the property owned by the Testamentary Trust of Pearl E. Weiss. This property is located on the west side of Simpson Road between Cloud Street and Crawford Street along that entire mile. The right-of-way acquisition along this property was estimated to be over ten thousand dollars, and therefore, the Federal Highway Administration requires that a certified appraiser determines the value of the right-of-way taking. Uh, real estate appraisal services was hired to perform this task. Enclosed in your packet are the, the right-of-way exhibit plan sheets uh for this property and a summary of the appraisal report. The hatched areas on the exhibit plan sheets are showing the new right-of-way um that will need to be obtained. Uh, also enclosed is a summary table providing the cost of all the right-of-way acquisitions along the project. Alternatives for action, uh, the first one would be to approve the right-of-way offer along the property owned by the Testamentary Trust of Pearl E. Weiss for the value indicated on the appraisal report, or two, provide a modified offer. However, the additional, however, additional information must be provided uh to the appraiser, which would justify the change in value. Staff recommends to approve the right-of-way offer of fourteen thousand dollars for two-point-five-eight-nine acres of dry land crop ground uh to the Testamentary Trust of Pearl E. Weiss as determined by the appraiser. Payment for the acquisition would be paid out of the one-twenty-four account for special road construction.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments by the Commissioners?
This is just the last piece of that puzzle to get this project uh.
Yes, it is. Yeah, this is the last, last tract.
And when would construction physically start?
So the bid letting, uh, which will go through KDOT, um, is, I believe it's in July of next year, so twenty-twenty-two. It's kind of late in the construction season, um, in order, once all the contracts and all that get signed up. So my guess is it's going to be um a spring or summer of twenty-twenty-three.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Justin, uh, okay. Commissioner Vidrickson, uh, we have not made the offer uh yet. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So the, yeah, to follow the process that the Federal Highway Administration puts forth is, you know, we've, we've valued the property, uh, the value of the right-of-way taking, and now I need approval from the Commissioners to make the offer.
And the other, the other uh uh land acquisition along this, in the same uh vein of things, uh, ha- have those offers been made and accepted?
Those offers, um, about eighty percent of them, they've all been made. Um, about eighty percent of them, you know, maybe one or two tracks have not accepted yet. Um, however, I know one of the, two of the tracks are because of some health issues. Um, they're just not able to focus on that right now. Uh, so, but all the other tracks have of, have a, accepted the offer.
Refresh me, what happens if uh the, the Pearl Weiss uh, uh, trust does not accept this offer?
So what they have to do is if, if they want to provide a counter offer, they must provide some information to be presented to the appraiser to justify that offer. We can't just raise the offer because we want to, or modify the offer really of any way. Uh, because we want to, there has to be justification to do that. So if they can't provide that, but they just want, you know, a, a higher dollar value, then really our only option would be uh eminent domain or cancel the project. Um, that's really our only two options. I have, I have talked um to the, the managers of the property, and she, you know, she's asked a lot of questions um because their value is different um from other dry land crop uh along that road. Um, you know, and, you know, they would like to see that same price. Um, but unfortunately, the appraiser didn't value it that way. Uh, so I, I think they'll accept it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any public questions or comments? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we proceed with the right-of-way offer uh of the Pearl E. Weiss Trust.
Second promotion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number one-four-seven dash twenty-one, Right-of-Way Offer for Simpson Road Improvement Project. Are there any further comments?
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
I will call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Good luck, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item.
Item number five, RFA one-four-eight dash twenty-one, Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three twenty-eight, Appointment of the Saline County Committee for Reducing Criminal Behavior Members with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Well, good morning, Mrs.
Well, good morning. I'm um here in front of you, seeking um approval. Sit on. Okay. No, I don't know. It's, I don't have a very, I have a very soft voice, so it's really hard to tell. I'll try to project better. I don't know.
Is your green light on down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I really have gotten a softer voice. Nobody's going to believe that. Okay, so um we were here last week in a study session and um talking about the uh Committee to Reducing Criminal Behavior, we gave you the appointment names that we suggested. Um, and so now I'm here to um read the resolution. The alternatives are always that you can approve them or deny them. Um, we recommend that you approve that list. I met with Commissioner Chadwick and um County Administrator, and um those were the names that we picked out of the interest forms. So I'm going to proceed to read the resolution, and I guess we'll go from there. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Saline County, Kansas, have determined that it is in the best interest of the county to have a committee for Saline County Committee for Reducing Criminal Behavior. And whereas the potential appointments were voted on at a public meeting held on March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Whereas those appointed confirmed their willingness to serve. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Saline County, Kansas, that the following persons are appointed to the Committee for the Saline County Committee for Reducing Criminal Behavior. Monty Chadwick, County Commissioner, Annie Grievous, Chairman, County Community Corrections Director, Jeff Ebel, and Alex Driskel, Committee members that will be sharing time due to their heavy caseload, County Attorney's Office, Jack Shahean, Committee Member, Defense Attorney, Deborah Cox, Committee Member in the Mental Health Area, Cheryl Calhoun, Committee Member, Substance Abuse Area, and Julie McKenna, Committee Member, Interested Citizen. Adopted this sixth day of April, twenty-twenty-one by the Board of County Commissioners of Saline County, Kansas.
Thank you, Annie. Are there any questions or comments from the Commission?
Uh, this is Commissioner Vidrickson. Uh, I thought I heard a name or two there that's not on my list. Could, could you go through that list again, please, Annie?
I'd be glad to.
Um, Annie, you've got the old copy of the resolution.
Okay, well.
Um, that, we just, Commissioner Vidrickson, this is um County Administrator. So uh, the only difference there is that um we had a draft resolution that had specific names for uh the community corrections and county attorney's offices. And those are not necessary because those are in the bylaws of the committee as um by position, not by name. And so we don't want to have to come back and amend this resolution uh if uh uh those people change over. So that's the only difference. But the, um, all the community members are the same. Um, and those are the ones that we discussed last week. So that's, that's the difference.
I apologize. I um, we, we did the resolution and then um I, I guess somehow I didn't get that corrected copy, but I did know that they were going to remove Commissioner Chadwick and myself. And that I rolled with it and still gave a shout-out to Commissioner Chadwick and myself, you know?
Well, if Commissioner Chadwick and Annie are not to be on the list, I, I'd show four names, and I thought I heard more than that read. Jack Shan, Deborah Cox. Jack Shan, Deborah Cox, Cheryl Calhoun, and Julie McKenna. Am I correct, or am I not hearing correctly, or what?
Well, also, oh, sorry, Commissioner. Also, I did say Jeff Ebel and Alex Driscoll, although, um, following, um, commis, um, county administrator's comments, those I think are mandated appointment too, so, um, maybe they don't need to be on there. I think it's just important that you know that it'll be a shared responsibility, but, you know, I, I agree, that might be why you just had Jack, Deborah, Cheryl, and Julie.
Yep.
It feels like I, it feels like I need to come back and do this again.
I think we can clean it up here, Annie.
Okay.
Uh, so, your committee is a seven-member committee?
Yes.
And are they all voting members, or some excto, or?
Well, I'd have to go look at the bylaws.
They're all voting, I'm sure.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm good, you're welcome.
I question one of those names on your proposed list here. That's that Shadwick guy? Did he, did he fill out an expression of interest form or anything?
Well, I'm going to tell you a secret that you don't know, and I'll say it quietly. He's actually served some time. Monty, I mean, Mr. Shadwick, I had to tell him because I, I don't know if you filled out a form. The truth has to come out.
Thank you, Annie.
Is there any way I can, is there any way I can do a mute button on you?
And, and Monty, I had to give you bad time, but appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and, uh, glad you stepped up the plate and got it put together, so, good luck with it.
Yes. Are there any other comments or questions by the commission?
We probably need to vote on it.
Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Karen Shade, um, I'm really pleased that Deborah Cox has agreed to be part of this group. What isn't mentioned on paper, and I didn't recall seeing in her letter of, of interest or whatever, is she worked for, with vocational rehab, and so to pick up the piece of, to people who are gainfully employed, might not be engaging in criminal behavior, why, why are so many jobs going seeking, and, and why aren't, why isn't that working as well? I think she'll bring a huge amount of wisdom and knowledge there. Um, I thought I had been reading through the agendas and noticing things, but I'm learning, I, I guess this is where I'm seeking clarification. You're using the bylaws from the Committee to Reduce the Jail Population in a modified way, or are there bylaws for this group?
We are, I can answer that. We are not using the same bylaws. Those have been revised and have not been put out probably beyond this group and, and the commissioners, because it wasn't approved. I assume that those will be public knowledge as soon as everything gets going.
Wonderful. Um, and my next question, and this might be something to be decided by you all, but will these meetings be open to the public?
Uh, yes, there, um, in, in the bylaws, it does state that the meetings are subject to the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. And I would just, you know, I don't want to dredge up things from the past, but I used to attend the meetings for the Committee to the Reduce the Jail Population, and sometimes there was need to not have the meetings, and if it weren't for Linda Johnson cluing me, and I showed up several times, not knowing. So, the mechanism of it being in the county agenda and showing up as an agenda item, and some of that worked well, and, and that, that's just what I'm suggesting for this, to avoid that.
All right.
Um, and I, and maybe this will come, maybe Ms. Grievous has already answered it. I'm curious about the direction of the committee. Um, I think there's a huge need for this. I spent five months last year at the Ashby House, process of an eviction that I didn't want, um, and I learned there's a lot of young people who go by the motto, "Come to Salina on vacation, leave on probation." And I don't know where that comes from, because I hadn't heard it before. Um, maybe it's a law enforcement thing, maybe it's that they perceive that they can do certain criminal behaviors here. I don't know. There's a lot of, um, I, I was horrified at the number of pregnant women remanded to a kind of, um, uh, rehab or sober house living while they were pregnant, and that seems terribly horrible to me. And I think for the benefits of these children, we want people to understand that, you know, pregnancy and substances don't mix. Um, and there's a lot of things that go on here, and, um, I, I really hope with this third bite of the apple, um, some things will result.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 21-2328, Appointing Members to the Sling County Committee for Reducing Criminal Behavior.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 148-21, Resolution 21-2328, Appointment of the Sling County Committee for Reducing Criminal Behavior members. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item number six, RFA 149-21, Agreement for City's Special Alcohol Fund Award with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Well, good morning, Annie. Good seeing you.
Thank you. Um, this, I also met with you last week on, um, I think, an update, and I let you know that we were awarded, um, portions of the City of Salina Special Alcohol Fund, and that this was the first time Community Corrections had applied for that. Um, so, I'm now in front of you, seeking permission and signature on their agreement and information, um, based on the requirements. Um, so, we are requesting approval to accept the dollars that'll be allocated to us, much like, um, Sling County does in increments as it comes in each quarter, or however that works. Um, but Community Corrections, um, received an award of 6.7% up to our total amount award of $45,300. So, um, those funds will be used to assist drug court and pretrial clients, and the cost of treatment services, and sober living, which are, come at a high cost but are desperately needed. So, the alternative is we ask that you approve those funds. Obviously, you can deny those, but I'm coming back to each one of you for a check. Um, we, of course, recommend that you approve them, and that is it. And I believe the commission have the documents, there are four that the city needs signed by the chairman, and, um, once that's done, we'll move forward and get it to the city.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion from the commission? Any comments from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the committee for discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the agreement with the City of Salina as presented by staff. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 149-21, Agreement for City's Special Alcohol Fund Award. Any further comments? Seeing that, I'll call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Annie.
Thank you very much.
Now, we'll move into informational items. Item one.
Um, item number one, Review of Commission Meeting Structure with Phil Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Uh, so, a lot has happened with county commission meetings over the last 12 months, as we have weathered, uh, the pandemic and moving, uh, to, uh, various different remote possibilities, but, uh, one constant change has been the move from the old structure where we had two meetings every Tuesday to this new consolidated meeting. And I think that that has, um, had some, uh, things to hire and out along the way in terms of how we, uh, notice study sessions and that sort of thing. So, just coming to the commission for some discussion, feedback from you all, um, how you think that this new, uh, structure has worked, what you would like to see changed, a few, uh, ideas or things that have been, um, suggested by various folks. Um, one is, uh, the, the placement of, uh, staff when they give presentations. Um, you know, we, we have people who sort of sit over there, we have people who come to, uh, the microphone, and, um, some folks have said, well, maybe we should, um, be more consistent in that. Um, another, uh, bit of confusion is, okay, what, what do we consider a, an informational item versus what do we consider a study session? And should we have maybe some, uh, clearer, uh, delineation of, of those, uh, two types of items? A, a third item that has been proposed is, um, maybe we move to some type of more sophisticated agenda management, uh, system, and, um, so frankly, that's one of the reasons for sticking this on the agenda at this point in time was, uh, that might be a TIP request for the 2022 budget, if there's interest in, um, in pursuing that. So, I'm just, um, seeking feedback from the five of you, uh, with regard to what you think is working and not working, and what we could do better, because staff's always interested in improvement, so.
This is Commissioner Vidrickson. Uh, I, I like the new, the new format that we've been using with, with, uh, a little bit of tweaking perhaps. Uh, when, when we have a, a department head coming in for an action item along with, uh, and they would also be on the agenda for perhaps an informational item, uh, sometimes that, that department head may have to sit there for an hour or so. And when, uh, previously, that was, uh, was our objective, was to, you know, put people back-to-back, uh, with their presentations regardless of what they were, so that they could get back to work rather than wasting, uh, you know, at, back when we first started this about four or five years ago, uh, they could waste a half a day, uh, having to be the first one on the agenda and then coming around and, uh, be the last one on there. So, we tried to put those ones, uh, quickly on the agenda that would, you know, and get them back to work as quickly as possible. And, uh, that, that's kind of, kind of where I'm coming from on, on, on that end of it. Also, I mean, I do like the fact that we're consistently, uh, getting, uh, proclamations and things like that, uh, from community members, and that we get them on the agenda quickly and, uh, get them on their way also. And I know that's, that's appreciated by those, uh, organizations and people and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Vidrickson.
Bob, I got a question. Make sure I understood. Are you wanting, if, if they have both a action item and an information item, that they do those back-to-back? Uh, I mean, are, I don't want to, I think we need to keep each piece of business in a certain time, how, all the, all the action items happen at one time, and then we go to information or vice versa, but, but I, I don't want to be jumping back from a action item to an information item, and I, I want to make sure I understood what you were saying.
Um, that's exactly what I was saying. I mean, uh, if, if, um, let's just say, uh, Annie Grievous, uh, this morning would have been the first one up on, on an action. Well, like, she was actually on, uh, if, if Phillip, now I'm using the wrong people, but if we have someone who, uh, perhaps Marilyn would be giving her update on, uh, on the HR department, and then she wants to give us some informational items, uh, she could sit there an hour from one presentation to the next. That's what I'm saying, that we, hopefully, we could, uh, clean that up a little bit, but if that's not what you want, uh, it's okay with me.
No, I, I understand time management and, and what you're saying. I, I think there it would go to staff to try to place those people. If they have something in both categories, put them at the end and have them do the last of the action and the first of the information, and not have them set through the whole meeting. I, I don't know if it could be done through scheduling. I, I just don't want to get confused jumping from an action item to an information item, back to an action item. That's just my thought.
And Phil, what is it that you, you brought up, something about a new management system for this?
Um, so, currently, the agendas are prepared essentially in, um, Microsoft Word, and then, uh, converted to Adobe PDF document and posted in that way on, um, the website. And then when we go to archive them, we archive an entire year at a time, and it becomes very difficult to find things. It is difficult to sort of, you know, if you're just looking for one item, um, uh, you, you have to scroll through hundreds and hundreds of pages, uh, of things, uh, which I think is inconvenient for the public. It's also, um, can be a burden on, on staff as we're trying to, to find historical items. There are agenda management programs. Uh, the county clerk and I and, and Linda have, have set through a couple of, um, different presentations, uh, by vendors who do this sort of thing for a living. So, you, um, would enter the agenda items into essentially a database, and then it is, um, stored in that format, and so, um, that makes it much easier to search for things, to pick out one specific item in a string, uh, depending on how robust the system is, could make it easier to prepare minutes as well. Um, so, and, and, you know, there are very, very fancy ones that make it, um, where you tag your video as well. So, you could, um, click on something and see, uh, the RFA and the, uh, action and, uh, and the actual video all at, at one place. And so, it's just, uh, there are a whole variety of different, um, options around that. Um, obviously, the more bells and whistles you have, the costier they are, but there are some that are, um, I think fairly inexpensive, but would be a, uh, a significant improvement over, um, the way we do it now. Um, we actually had some conversations with the City of Salina, because they are not satisfied with the way they do, uh, their agendas either. Um, talked about whether we could go together and purchase something. It sounds like they have a, a, a plan, they, they're on a track, and would not work, um, to, to do something jointly, but, um, doesn't, still doesn't answer the question of whether we should do something on our own.
Okay. Thank you. That was just interesting. Do you have any information on that?
Um, I would just like to, to reiterate what, uh, County Administrator Phil Smith Haynes said is, you know, it's something that, you know, I've been wanting to do for a long time as well, because I think, um, some of the problems are, um, in archiving and for historical data, when we're looking for a resolution or an item going back even years, um, trying to find that is really difficult. And so, I think, because we scan in then all the resolutions, I think having them in a program like And so I think because we scan in then all the resolutions, I think having them in a program like that, we could attach the signed resolution. Other department heads could find it if they needed it, such as Roden Bridge. They're looking at stuff. A lot of times it's like, when was this signed? I need a copy of it. You know, it helps in everybody being able to work in that same system and to do research on their own versus us having to do it maybe when we're under an election or something like that, that would help everyone utilize the system.
Thank you.
I'm all in favor of anything to streamline the process. Look at it, bring it to us. Your thoughts and your ideas. I just appreciate getting my hard copy once a week so I can, I can actually retrieve it and hold it, something tangible in my hand. So, and as far as the meeting format, one of your questions or suggestions was informational items versus study sessions. Kind of the moot point, kind of the same thing, aren't they? Call them whatever. I don't have any problem with that. And if we could also some way make it more efficient for department heads and elected officials that do come before us. And that would be awesome. I believe we've accomplished that with our county council and maybe we could work towards that goal also.
Any other comments?
This is Commissioner Chadwick. I agree. I like the moves that we made a year ago. The main thing that I like is everything is now on TV. Not that we did anything wrong back in that back room, but there's just reception that it wasn't open. And that's the biggest positive. I might be different than everybody else. I'm a big fan of consent agendas and those could be as long as possible for me. But, you know, the purple light thing would be a perfect example of things that can be put on the consent agenda. They can always be pulled off and little simple things like that could clean up the day. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We'll move on. Item two.
County Administrator's update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Philip.
Good morning again. Thank you for your input on that last item. So for my update, I just had a few things to make you aware of. So the first item, as you know, we currently have a request for proposals out for updating our website. One of the problems or I won't call it a problem, one of the suboptimal features of our website is that it doesn't particularly work well on mobile devices. And so we have worked with a company that's actually working through the Salina Chamber of Commerce that they have an app. It's called the TownLink app and we will be getting our web information into that app. And will allow people to have a little bit easier mobile access to county information. So I wanted to apprise the commission of that. We have a number of project updates. The jail, we have been meeting about two to three times per week on design features of the jail. Myself, the architectural staff, the, the construction management staff and most importantly, the staff of the sheriff's office have been in those meetings and walking through various different parts of the proposed building, doing a deep dive. They now have a virtual 3D fly-through of some of the spaces which Commissioner Wees and Commissioner Vidrickson got to see yesterday afternoon. So we've, we're continuing to make progress on that. One of the big milestones, the City of Salina Planning Commission is meeting this afternoon and they have on their agenda approval of our planned development district that you all approved submitting back, I believe, toward the end of February. And so I will be attending that meeting this afternoon along with folks from the architect's office. So the jail is moving forward. Expo, that project is also moving forward. We have a schedule that's in development. I'm, it's sort of on its third iteration. So I believe we should be in a position to present that to the commission by the end of this month to give you a longer update and look at that schedule. The radio project, Hannah. I think Hannah's still on. She's give you just a few updates on where we are with the radio project.
Absolutely. So there has been a lot of work since even our last update. We have gotten several antennas that have been installed on the antennas that is looking at the the tower at the Kansas Highway Patrol site. And then we've got a equipment that's going to be starting to be installed in the building that is located on that site. So we've also got lots of work that's going to be happening at the dispatch, the 911 dispatch centers, the primary and the backup here in the next couple of weeks. And we have completed training. So one of the other big steps has been the conversations of basically how it is to the development of transition plans. We are scheduled, right, as the way it was when we signed the contract, to cut over to the new system that first week in June. So a big portion of that is trying to figure out how it is that we transition from the old system to the new system. But all of our key players have been heavily involved with making that plan happen. And then we still continue to work diligently on the other two tower locations. We're hopefully coming fairly close to having some more discussion items that will be brought to the commission on that.
Great. And then the other item in terms of project updates is the design study for our office, the commission office and the clerk's office. We ended up, county clerk and I reviewed proposals. We got seven proposals from architects, which was great, and we ended up selecting BG. They are the folks who are working with the building authority on some of the exterior improvements. And they had a good price, frankly, for their work. And so we're very impressed by that. And we have our first meeting with them this Thursday. So just a heads up that at some point, all the commissioners will be contacted as well to talk about your preferences regarding the commission office as well. And then the last thing that I wanted to touch base with you all today is just an update on what's going on down the road in Topeka. First adjournment of the legislative session is scheduled for this Friday, which means that there's a lot of activity going on. As you know, two of the more significant bills impacting counties have already passed and been signed by the governor. So that would be Senate Bill 13, which ends the tax lid in exchange for new transparency requirements. And Senate Bill 40, which impacts the Kansas Emergency Management Act. There is a flurry of activity on various different things, including things that would change requirements for county appraisers and, and different folks. But probably the most significant risk, I guess I will say, to the county that remains active is that the Senate is still considering two bills, SB 149 and SB 286 on claims process or tax relief for businesses impacted by local COVID restrictions. So those are still active. We thought at one point that those, we're not going to make it out of committee. And then they, they've been resurrected. So that remains something that we're monitoring to see where those things go. We certainly want to make sure that our, you know, businesses locally get taken care of that have been impacted by COVID. But don't want that to be at the expense of every other taxpayer in the community. So that is what I have for an update this morning and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions by the commission? Thank you, Philip Smith Haynes. Any commissioner's comments? Any announcements? See none? We'll recess to room 107 for executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff would request an executive session under the employer employee negotiations, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss labor negotiations for a period of 15 minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move we recess to executive session under the employer employee negotiations, exception to Kansas Opening Act for 15 minutes.
Second. Then move in second and move into executive session in room 107. And we'll meet back in here at 10, let's say 10:45, 10:55.
Need to take a vote, don't you?
Yes, all in favor? Oh, Commissioner White.
Hi.
Commissioner Wees.
Hi.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Hi.
Commissioner Chadwick.
Hi.
Commissioner Sparks.
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0. Oh, you guys speak in line there. Thank you.
Well, there's still your team people.
Okay, we are back into regular session. Do we have any other comments by commissioners? Any other comments? Seeing none, uh, I think that we can just, uh, no further business. Uh, we'll just call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.